Act for Notice of Speeding has been given before the overall public means act for civil and public laws in nineteen seventy-five. Said notice of advertising in our press in Lacey Beacon, which was posted on the board showing the time and place of the meeting, but from two hours ago. Alleged agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, I have a number one that's going to be tabled, so we need to second read the ordinance two thousand sixteen thirteen, setting the salary for the chief of police position.
In order to attach a place in county motion state of New Jersey, amending in order to attach in order to attach a place in county motion state of New Jersey, fixing and determining the salary wages and compensation of the office employees and members who have already body attached. This is just setting the salary for two thousand sixteen seventeen and eighteen for the chief of police position.
We'll second put up to the public.
Close, any more comments? Close.
Mr. Kirkel.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes.
Uh, resolution two thousand sixteen two oh seven pointing to this call nine one one coordinator.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey pointing Paul J. Sullivan, lieutenant, as municipal nine one one coordinator in the town of Lacey. And of course with the office of emergency management, we need to have somebody named um as a nine one one coordinator that the planning board corresponds with us, new streets are made so that they have with regards to our cad and putting in the proper locations and addresses and the county needs that. There is no additional compensation or anything else, it's just that you have to name an individual for OEM purposes.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two oh eight awarding contract for fire billing and related services.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey awarding a contract for the fire billing and related services to P A Fire Recovery Services. As you know, we had discussed this with regards to fire billing, um what we are doing with uh regards to motor vehicles and and house fires is that we are going after insurance companies to recoup some of our costs for fire billing um from these. At no time will the residents be responsible for any of the bills, it will just be via your insurance company. If you equip in a claim to your insurance company, um we will be receiving a percentage back um from that for the cost of our fire service costs.
Move it, second.
Mr. Cortola, I mean, Mr. McDonald. Mr. McDonald, Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two oh nine awarding contracts to these vehicles.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey awarding to two thousand seventeen board explorer police intercepting utility vehicles with options to winter court in Cherry Hill. Again, these are the um board explorers, uh they are twenty-four thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty cents each for a total of forty-eight thousand nine sixty-five twenty.
Second.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two ten authorizing the change order for the veteran's way realignment project.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey authorizing execution and amendments to the contract for Pearl Assail Company for the realignment for a portion of veterans' way. As we sat down with our last boss and we sat down with the county engineer, when we looked at the intersection of Adams and Manchester Avenue, there is now at Adams, there's a median in the middle of the road. In order to get the proper turn accesses that we need and to have a left turn out and a right turn out holding lane to proceed onto Manchester, the county felt for safety purposes that we should take out that center median, middle of the road, match it up obviously with um Manchester Avenue and also as you're coming from this direction down Manchester to turn left onto Adams, there will be a dedicated left turn lane in the middle. So for safety purposes, I needed to amend this contract to add an additional thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars um for this contract. We do have money, it was bonded at the time when we um went out to bond for this project.
So do you not have the wiring interest at all?
The county is still doing their studies and stuff on that, the laying risks and everything to do that are are properly wide enough now, so it fits and it works and the county sent us down a new restriping plan for that. But again, they are looking at future enhancements to Manchester and to the traffic light up here at Western Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two eleven renewing our membership of Ocean County C E B G.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey accepting the terms and conditions of the community development block grant settlement program for the business school years of two thousand seventeen through nineteen. As you know, on even year, not odd years actually, we, no, it's even years, that's right, even years, we are allotted money through community development block grant funds for various projects and designated target neighborhoods, so we have to renew our membership every three years and again, this is for the future years.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two twelve authorizing receipt of bids for the rental of loaders for the lease number order.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey authorizing receipt of bids for the rental of John Deere loaders with two thousand sixteen lease program and two thousand sixteen seventeen snow uh season program.
Move it, second.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two thirteen authorizing the award of sale block four thousand five lot seven to the joint car period.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey authorizing the award of a bid for the sale of vacant land known as block four thousand five lot seven pursuant to H J S A forty-eight point twelve dash thirteen feet high. This is a non-conforming parcel of property, I believe it's thirty-one feet wide by um a couple thousand feet long, is going to principles of the land to be accompanied by the ball corporation for the cost of ten thousand dollars.
Move it, second.
Mr. Cortola.
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two.
Who can't hear who talks there?
Resolution two thousand sixteen two fourteen authorizing lien on block ten fifty-eight lot thirty-two for property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey accepting certification of the director of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up the property located at seven forty-one twelve house drive and authorizing replacement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of one hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Move it.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two fifteen authorizing lien on block one 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 twelve, block twenty-one property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey accepting certification of the director of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up the property located at nine oh nine Center Street Drive and authorizing replacement of a lien against said property for said cost. This was quite an extensive cleanup that public works had to do there, um they spent over a total of uh, I'd say five hours there, um with various uh members of the staff, it's four hundred and eighty dollars and thirteen cents.
Move it.
Resolution two thousand sixteen two sixteen authorizing lien on block ten twenty-four point twenty-five, lot twenty-five, one one four for property maintenance.
You didn't have a motion on that one.
I need a motion on that one.
I'm running behind a second.
Sorry.
Back to number eleven.
I need a motion on that one, four hundred and eighty dollars. Pete, okay, okay.
Second.
All right, Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, okay.
Next.
Resolution two thousand sixteen two sixteen authorizing lien on block ten twenty-four point twenty-five, lot twenty-five, one one four for property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey accepting certification of the director of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up the property located at seventeen twenty-four Memorial Drive and authorizing replacement of a lien against said property for said cost. This total amount is two hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two seventeen authorizing the refund of deposit rate.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey authorizing the refund of deposits to help with the use of municipal facilities.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Yes, resolution two thousand sixteen two eighteen authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of ten million nine hundred thirty thousand, ten million nine hundred thirty thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and ten cents.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Resilience reports.
Municipal clerk's office for the month of July, collective receives the amount of four thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Community development for the month of June, collective receives the amount of one hundred four thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty cents. For the month of June, for the month of July, community development collective receives the amount of sixty-four thousand one hundred seventy dollars and seventy-five cents. Municipal docks for the month of July, collective receives the amount of seven hundred twenty-five dollars. Recycling commodities in the amount of six hundred and four dollars. Road opening permits in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred five dollars. Truck parking in the amount of fifty dollars. Municipal court for the month of June, collective receives the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. For the month of July, the amount of twenty-eight thousand sixty dollars and twenty-four cents. Motion to accept thirty quarters as read.
Move it.
All favor.
Aye aye.
Motion to approve.
Prove to. Second.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of July fourteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Move it, second.
All favor. Motion to approve township meeting minutes of July fourteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Move it, second.
All favor. Motion to approve raffle licenses for the historical society rotary club operator of our L T E just boost association and the nice and glamorous ladies auxiliary.
Move it, second.
All favor.
Amendment. Resolution two thousand sixteen dash two nineteen, it's a property maintenance, it's a resolution attached to Lacey County motion state of New Jersey accepting certification of the director of public works and of course amounts of persons across the fur in the removal of debris cleaning up the property located at three oh three Enterprise Drive and placing and on rest and placement of lien on said property for said cost. But this is, we had a very dangerous situation with a very large bee hive, unfortunately it was in um the front yard of the property, uh so we had to call an exterminator to remove it and bag it and the property owner has a lien on the property for a hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Cortola.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Mr. Juliana.
Yes.
Mayor Cass.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of brief announcements tonight, I'd like to uh, I'm sure everyone feels the same way, congratulate our girl softball team. Um, parent of a young daughter and uh, I'm all about good old power, I hope those young ladies do well as they move on to college, they deserve it, they made us proud, just like our little league team did a couple of years ago and they really deserve it and uh, we're all very, very proud of them. In the spirit of public health and and now we chose a ribbon cutting this morning, it was actually in Little Lake Harbor, where it's the pavement for us here in Lacey, uh was for ocean health initiatives. O H I uh is a federally qualified health center, so if you know somebody, and I have no horse in this race, this is public information, if you know somebody uh that is uninsured or medically underinsured and they're in need of services, anything about emergent services, I mean, they got pediatric, dental, O B and they even have a laboratory down there, uh give them a call, uh they're seven three two, three six three, six six five five, uh again, it's a federally qualified health center, there's another federally health, qualified health center, Tom Jever and legal for medically underinsured and uninsured people, usually it's just a copay, don't hold me on that call. Last night I was fortunate enough with some colleagues to uh go to Congressman Arthur's grand opening, uh and oftentimes they've sat up here, grateful that I am personally, and I know we all feel the same way, the level of communication that Congressman has with all of us up here. Uh just today we received another email letting us know about a grant workshop for the fire company, so I texted right to a floor of the fire chief, I'll text the other two chiefs right at home tonight. So it's just things like that, he's constantly looking out for us with and that open line of communication, he spends a great deal of time in Ocean County, um and we're just very grateful here in Lacey for that support. I'd like to uh also report, I met with our chief uh last Friday, so our new chief, Chief DeBella, uh I think you're gonna see a lot of things coming out really soon with uh regards to prevention, outreach into the community, um he is uh gonna be meeting with the superintendent Monday morning at ten, uh and just looking forward to growing that relationship, as a lot of people know, public health is very good, uh so, you know, when we talk about prepare, prevent, protect, these are some of the things that we talk about. So I would uh, and I know my colleague, Mr. McDonald, he's been, we talking about the rec department, so I'll leave that to him, but just on a personal level, my dear goes to the rec department, she's there at Eaton Park each day, I can't say enough about how many people that that rec department has in the summer camp, uh quality, the value, the fact that the young people working there are certified, um and in outstanding places for young people to spend their summers, and I know it's extremely well attended, all the parks are, thanks to the good work of the department as we have over there in rec, municipal alliance, folks are gonna talk about that. This is all we had on, I apologize for being long-winded tonight, uh we'll ease on to our health department here in Lacey. So we have a flu clinic coming up September twenty-ninth, ten AM to twelve, twelve noon, Medicare Part D cards will be accepted, flu vaccination, cheap, twenty dollars, pneumonia vaccination, twenty dollars. So stop by between uh ten and twelve noon, um target population for pneumonia vaccine, sixty-five milliliters. Ocean County Health Department always has nurses on staff there, usually a doctor will be on staff there, is well answer questions, was well attended last year, I'll be there again this year, uh it's just part of the outreach that the county has into our townships, it's good for everybody, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Pete, can I move on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, let's start, uh I want to congratulate the girls softball team, uh with their great engagement, and I don't think the fault are expressed enough, they were down all the time for reason, following the lady who came back to live, so I just showed you some of their grit and determination there. Uh, I saw a mission through Greg Wiley, the new superintendent, best of luck, the school district, um and then on August eighteenth, sixteen AM, right here in the uh courtroom here is the construction, uh the cornerstone Lacey, which is the uh, uh portable housing we're in, and uh, and that's set to open up February two thousand seventeen, that's right around the corner here, so.
Pre-application process for qualified classes.
Right, so that's, that's a good thing as well. Okay, let's talk about the rec, which is kind of my favorite, let's talk about, uh, letter here from Mr. Wiley about this, uh five hundred thirty-one uh student special for summer in the Parks Camp this summer, quoted over fifty-five thousand dollars, we can't, increased by about thirteen percent compared to last year, uh late badges, forty-four thousand two hundred forty late badges so far, uh now basis of forty-four, actually they sold forty-four fifty in case it's gonna need some people there. Um, recreation basketball programs have been doing well, we got a hundred kids in the three-on-three, which goes Mondays and Wednesdays nights, Lego engineering, uh has about twenty students along through the little castles, our program, the theater camps are fully registered for the waitlist, uh program volleyball, tennis camp, field hockey camp, art camp are all filled, uh incredible, uh the upcoming events, obviously we got Lacey Day, uh from twelve before Gilly Park, we got Mark Wurst, uh performing his lottery comedy act, amazing magic show live on stage, uh it's just a good old fashioned town picket because he really comes down, looks like one out, do well, and enjoy it. Uh Thursday, August eighteenth, we have the outdoor movie Legends of Lacey Township, uh Deerhead Beach, this is done by uh, a cameraman here.
And uh it's actually Mr. Merman, it's not.
Mr. Merman, I'm sorry, wow. And and our town historian participated in that John Parker movie. Uh, okay, and then uh Thursday, August eighteenth, full movie, other of the stars at Middle Arc Beach, which starts at nine o'clock, and then we have the uh, Saturday, August twenty-seventh, we have the Lacey Five K race, which is a real score. And Mr. Wurst, that's all I have.
And Juliana.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things, as uh, I'm a liaison to public works, a few things I'd like to go over with what's going on uh in town in public works. Uh first, Veterans Way realignment, construction is begin to reroute Veterans Way running behind the wild line, running into Adams Street, which intersects Manchester Avenue. This change will ease the ongoing congestion that exists at its current location, the county will be establishing turn lanes and through lanes as shown on the plan, which, I I couldn't get the big plan, but if anybody wanted to take a look at it, I'm sure we have it on file here, uh it's, it's, shows everything with the turn lanes on there. Which should aid the overall traffic flow of Manchester Avenue between Lacey Road and Adams Street. Your own construction is the contractor and the project should be completed before later than, it is, it is our goal to have it completed before the start of school. Second project, Bayberry Village, pay phase two. In two thousand fourteen, the township began a road improvement project within the Bayberry Village subdivision. Last week, the contractor began work on phase two, which includes the milling and paving of the remainder of East Haynes Street leftover from phase one, which was Noelwood, Ashwood, Laurelwood, Driftwood, and the entire length of Bayberry Drive. The contractor Johnson and Barron is scheduled to be on the site next week to begin the milling process. Paving will follow and the project should be wrapped up within two weeks. Phase three, which will be planned in the future, will complete this total area. Third thing, Bayfront Park rebuild. Uh, it will be three years since the township's Bayfront Park was destroyed by Superstorm Sandy. We have in place a beautiful plan to reboot, to rebuild this, please correct, spot to include a new tot lot for ages two to five and five to twelve, which will have a ship and a whale theme. The playground equipment is planned by exercise equipment, similar to what we have in Gilly and Hebrew Parks. Also in the plan is a thirty-two foot diameter gazebo, which links it to an observation deck leading to the point of the park. Other amenities include a walking path beginning at the main entrance and running throughout the entire length of the south porch, various benches, information, and trash recycling receptables, we really have the whole project. As for the future projection of this shoreline, the plan calls for Davion Rock filled cages, which will bolster up the existing brick wrapped rock and also provide tidal rise protection because of the cages will allow, you allow to build verticals. This plan has been ready for the implication, but requires a necessary permit from the state E D P. I'm happy to report that we recently re-received verbal confirmation for this permit, which is great news. We are in the process of scheduling bid dates and times to get this project moving and take advantage of the one point four million dollar E D A grant. Finally, as we talk to Lacey Day, uh you know it's Saturday, August thirteenth, Gilly Park called before, I just wanna put, I walked through there today, Casey Parker and the men got the park ball ready, uh it's pristine, it's clean, it's, looks as good as it always does every week and and every time he's over there doing something. Um, that's all I have, Mayor, until then.
Thanks, Mayor, you guys have pretty much covered everything in this question. I wanna, I would congratulate, uh, I'll be late, you girls softball team that was here earlier tonight, um, you know, it's quite an accomplishment to take and and reach the level that they've reached and it's certainly uh something that we're very proud of as governing body and I know the school board and and all the community is very much excited about this whole, you know, event that went to place. Um, I also want to, in addition to the girls, I want to congratulate the parents and and just recognize the parents, because the sporting programs are, are something that's not just the individual person playing the sport, it's also the family behind it, individuals that really plays a major role as these children grow up, um, you know, so they, they really have come a long way, I remember a lot of those young girls when they were little playing in our recreation league here in town, uh as well as the coaches, Tom Falkner, Terry Stewart, Trish Winkle, and the other coaches that weren't, that weren't here tonight, uh Tom Falkner and Terry Stewart are two individuals that have been involved in coaching this town from the recreation league all the way through the high school that they're in now, probably for the last thirty, thirty-five years for me. They've certainly established quite a legacy and perceive them at this point in their lives, reached that, you know, plateau like that, just so happy to all of them. Trish Winkle went across school system, and Trish is a great young lady, she plays softball, and I know she's contributing a lot, as well as the other assistant coaches, and uh, you know, it's, it's just great to see Lacey reach that level, so I congratulate each and every one that has done, uh, I, I certainly, you know, they, they repeat it over the next couple of years, it's a lot of talent on that team. Uh, the municipal alliance race is coming up in two weeks, head of stand when the alliance, the head of alliance was here earlier in the meeting, uh just bring everyone up to date on it. If you have, you know, nothing to do that day, you'd like to come out and participate, whether it be the run itself, five K, one mile, uh, you know, it's, it's really a major, major fundraiser for municipal alliance, they do so much good in this town, amongst the uh programs they're up at, seeing that the COVID out, all programs that they run, it's something that if you perhaps supported, I really, you know, would ask that you try and make that happen, it's the twenty-seventh of the month that we're here, yeah, uh, so that's something that's really good, and you know, Mayor will, you know, he's having a part of it, people will be there running up the hefty government body, and uh, I mean, he always makes it feel good, so stay thankful for that. Lacey Day, Saturday, it is Lacey Day, as the guys have mentioned, uh, I just want to mention, you know, in addition to, you know, the day being such a great event, um, the Rotary Club uh is, is gonna be there again this year, Rotary does supplies and does all the cooking for the municipality, uh they volunteer their time, they, they pay for the stuff that they cook in, it's, it's, they were, people who come out and really enjoy the community and they not have to dig into their pockets, it's all free, and it's, you know, just a nice community event, uh, there's a lot of different programs going on, but of course, they just in addition to tradition, uh with, with different civic groups, there's different sporting groups, uh, I know the karate groups in town, they open up different shows, so come on out, you know, spend a couple hours, um, hopefully it's not as hot as it's been all week, but uh, it should really, really be a nice event and certainly thank you for what they do. The only other comment I'll make, which uh Mr. Val touched on, was, was with regards to the uh meeting coming up on all these eighteen, which is gonna be held here in this courtroom for the affordable housing units that are being built back here behind Town Hall, uh those, that meeting is really a kickoff for people to sign up for the affordable units that are being built, one of all those homes, uh and the idea is that it's, if you're a Sandy victim and you were displaced by Sandy, you're gonna have an opportunity uh to be one of the first ones considered for that housing, uh the first three months are gonna be tried, they're gonna try and gear it towards Sandy victims, so it really is a, a, a nice uh thing for the residents, I hope we get a lot of residents in our, our town and surrounding municipalities that have really been struggling and this will be, they'll be beautiful units, they'll be affordable units, it's based on an equal level, so if you're watching the show at home and you're, you know, you don't qualify, but you know somebody, friend, a family member that could qualify for it, you know, mentioned to them, uh, the eighteen, leave this building, it opens up at five thirty and the meeting goes on at six o'clock, and then we're gonna ask you to go to the lake and then, you know, watch the documentary on this year, this town's board ran the other lake, so it's gonna be a real nice, uh, you know, night, we'll finish with the documentary, but it's gonna be very informative if you're still getting informed as you're visiting, so that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
And Gary, Pete.
Yeah, you, Juliana passed this down, and I'm really, I'm thankful that you did, I wanna announce this, uh Wednesday, August thirty-first, uh it's, we're gonna have International Overdose Awareness Day, all right, it's August thirty-first, six to nine PM, Lacey Community Ball, uh there's gonna be a lot of people there, uh there's gonna be Ocean County Prosecutor's Office, Lacey Township Municipal Alliance, there's gonna be uh programs you can look into for prevention, for treatment, um, different levels of treatment, funding pathways for that treatment if you're not able to pay, uh come out and take a look, a lot of these
Yeah, Pete, Julie, I'll pass this down, I'm glad, I'm thankful that you did, I want to announce this, Wednesday, August thirty-first, it's International Overdose Awareness Day, all right, it's August thirty-first, six to nine p.m., Lacey Community Ball, there's gonna be a lot of people there, there's gonna be Ocean County Prosecutor's Office, Lacey Township Municipal Alliance, there's gonna be programs you can look into for prevention, for treatment, different levels of treatment, funding pathways for that treatment, if you're not able to pay, coming out and taking a look, a lot of these people I know, because of the work that I do, a lot of them have worked with different projects before and around, and right here in Lacey, so I would say that if you know somebody who might need help, if you have any, you just want to find out someone, and get some information. Wednesday, August thirty-first, six to nine p.m., Lacey Community Ball, International Overdose Awareness Day, thank you, Mayor.
Pete? Everything's been in the air, so I'm gonna leave it up. Quickly, also congratulate the Lacey Girls Softball Team, and I also wanted to acknowledge their parents, probably have as many hours practicing softball as the girls do, and also, I'll see everybody at Lacey Day, I'll be there most of the day, so if you have any questions, if you have to answer, and with that, I'll put up the public, public any questions.
Hi, Julie, how are you? First, Lacey Girls Softball, finally we got to use Title Line, okay, you did quite a lot, I guess we're representing, you know, Title Lines are out for quite a while, it's good, it was a good piece of legislation. Number two, why did you channel this on the website?
It definitely was, because I double-checked it and pulled it up, and it was sent out via email.
It was posted? It was posted under what section, what do you click on?
Um, I'd have to look at it, I don't, I can't access it here on my iPad, under, I don't know if it's under News and Events, or if it's under the Calendar portion.
The Calendar portion doesn't come out.
All right, because it was there, because I looked it up, because I double-checked it in my stack, and it was posted, and it was emailed out, if you're on the email list, as well.
I'm not on the email list, sorry.
But it was, because I-
What I was going to ask, is that, you know I've been up here a bunch of times, you asked me for the same thing, you know, the reason is, is that transparency in government is important, I mean, thankfully, we have Tom, he does a great job, he brings out the information to the public, but the agenda is not a rule, it's not a mandatory thing, me posting on the website. It is a mandatory staple, I believe, that it has to go through the Jersey Press Association to be posted?
No, no.
What?
It's manned through that, the agenda, to the extent that I know, available forty-eight hours before the meeting, doesn't say where it has to be, or anything else?
Nothing else.
Not the other?
You don't have to go into-
No, but we wouldn't be able to afford that with our agenda by that post, because a newspaper, if I need to post something in the newspaper before Thursday, I have to have it to them last, last Friday, I don't have the agenda done at that point, the mayor has to do it on Monday.
The reason I'm bringing it up is, because it's not mandatory that it get done, is there a way to make sure, or insist?
You can sign up on the mailing list, and you'll get a little free hearing box.
I'm only a person, okay, what I'm looking for is more people who would access the website, to be able to look at it, and be able to make a determination if they want it on the date, which I said it is, or not, is there a way, other than in order, then it has to be posted on the website, to make sure it gets done, I'm just asking a question.
For here, or across the state?
Well, there's, no, just, just for Lacey, I know it can't be done for the state, but just for Lacey, and it's not only the township committee, there's agendas for not only the health, there's agendas for the planning board, there's agendas for the zoning commission, these are all information points that may be Lacey residents, if they had access to the website, where it definitely would be there, you would get more feedback, okay? Or you would have people like me showing up and going, okay, I'm glad I came, or I don't have to come, okay, just as a point of information for everybody, and for something for you guys and ladies to think about, doing, more transparency in government, it is better. And, another question I had is, under, under First Lady Mordecai, two sixteen fourteen, I didn't hear why you didn't read it.
We table this, because it's further reviewed, it needs to be done.
Okay, so, the next time, the next time it is on the agenda, and it's still be, whenever, it would still be First Lady?
Of course, of course.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any question, motion, close, second? I don't know. Move it. Second.